I need a motion to begin the meeting session. So, second. Luke Johnson, second one Mrs. Santa Har, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed we are leaving. And Principal Thorner, can you put us in questions?
I believe this is the right of the United States of America and to requalify the world's standards. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for coming on here tonight. The weather seems to be going backwards instead of forwards when it comes to the students, but it's a great night to be here and I see lots of great looking faces here. So, best part of the meeting, communication at the post school.
Thank you very much. Good evening and I'd like to welcome the Board of Education, the Longfellow School. We're having a fabulous year here at Longfellow School and we certainly appreciate the dedication of our Board of Education in supporting our students, staff and parents. I would also like to take just a moment to thank Mr. Andy Johnson and Mr. Kevin Edgar for their strong vision for District 200, their focus in action as board members and maintaining a strong educational program for all of our students. Best wishes to both of you in your future endeavors and thank you personally and District 200, Longfellow School, thank you. And also I'd like to give a thank you to our Longfellow PTA and our Vice President, Mrs. Anne Wannkeberg, for this evening and for their contributions to tonight. And recognize certainly and thank our hardworking, truly dedicated and totally student-focused Longfellow faculty for their support and attendance this evening. They are the best and I am thankful for that each and every day and thank you for being here tonight. And you're being requested to speak. Tonight we would like to share with you a facet of our physical education program with a focus on ball handling skills. In 2008, Longfellow School was awarded monies from their participation in the New 200 Foundation Fund Run and through that we purchased materials for our TOT program, Teams of Tomorrow. Over the last four years, our teams have performed for Weedy College, Weedy North High School, Weaton Middle School during their halftime shows. And our students tonight have given up their recess time to practice their skills in their routine for you. And with that, I would like you to turn your attention to the back of our gym and I'd like to introduce Mrs. Williams, the Bowler educator here, and the 2013 Longfellow PTO Teams of Tomorrow.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are proud to present Teams of Tomorrow!
If you think that was cool, just wait till we see this.
Ready?
It's strategy service! Time is for all of us!
Ladies and gentlemen, we hope you enjoy Teams of Tomorrow!
That was worth the price of admission, I'm sure. Our students and our staff at District 200 are just so totally awesome and thank you for your support for our students and our staff each and every day. I appreciate it and thank you for being at Longfellow School.
Thank you so much, Dan, Mr. Ricky, I couldn't do that in many years. I could not do it and March Madness has nothing on this. Terrific, absolutely great. Now, you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but I know that your parents and children probably want to be home for the evening activities, so we won't be badly able if you need to leave at this time. Teachers, you were free also if you wish to leave, but we do have some awards coming up on your colleagues, so if you wanted to stay for that and leave after that, that would be my duty. So, thank you, everyone for joining us tonight. Yes, we have modifications to be agenda. Are there any modifications that board members or staff should make? No? Uh, recognition for achievements, very good.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. We have several people here this evening for our recognitions and we have started with the first group. I'd like to invite Mr. Claypool up to the podium. This evening we are going to recognize our national honors recipients, our National American Finals, and also two of those students who received nominees for the Presidential Scholar Award. I'll let Mr. Claypool talk about those students himself. First off, thank you for giving us this opportunity. I stand here before you as the jury of conference for Weaton Middle School, reply with the very best we have. As you look at these five students, please note that while their accolades are exemplary, what they provide our school beyond the classroom is even greater. They are remarkable people, they represent the best of who we are, and so I am very proud to introduce them for more than just eight great students. As Dr. Harris said, we had six National American Finals this year, one of whom did not make it this evening, but we also have two young men who have been nominated for the Presidential recognition for their academics as well, which is honored in Manhattan. They will say something about that later, it sounds like they will gain on for that. But without further ado, because we've come here to hear you talk, I'm going to ask each of them to introduce themselves, the school they plan to attend, or they may still have options available to them, as well as their anticipated fields of study. So I'll start off with Matthew Mober.
I'm Matthew Mober, and I'm a small freshman attending my university's college.
Well, I'm Andrew Coruna. I'm planning on probably attending California State Technology and studying math or computer science. And the next person that's going to speak is nominated for the Presidential Award for Excellence, which even now is a huge thing until today.
First, Jessica, who is also nominated for the Senior Award for National Security. My name is Adam Erickson. I will probably be attending Yale University in the fall and most likely will study molecular biochemistry and biology.
Hi, I'm Joshua Porter. My top job is to be a professor of chemistry.
I'm Ashley Robbin. That's why I intend to have me to study and study the history of biology.
Congratulations, you're welcome. Come in the middle there and shake each one of our hands around the inside. Thank you to the students and Mr. Claypool for being here this evening. For those in the audience, as the transitioning here, National American Finals is a very, very significant award, although a very small percentage of students in the United States are recognized or dishonor. And the Presidential Scholar Award is the top 1% of the students across the United States. We have two nominees, which is rare, some years we have none. So congratulations to those students and thank you for being here. At this time, we also are going to be recognizing some very special staff here this evening. We have representatives from the New 200 Foundation and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Joseph Root at this time and he will explain the nominating process and the award for winners. Mr. Root, welcome.
Principal Thorner, Dr. Harris, you're always fortunate to be having us here. It's our pleasure to be able to do this. The goal of the foundation is to support education in the district. Volunteer parents and citizens who on our own time kept and raised money and redistributed to worthy programs and schools. These are programs which are new, are experimental, and are outside regular funding channels. It is also our pleasure to be able to recognize teachers who are above and beyond exceptional. This is an open nominating process which occurs in spring and from these nominations, the teachers meet the highest expectations who are chosen for these awards. Now I'd like to introduce a few members who presented some words about each of the recipients.
So this year we have over 100 nominations and we have currently number three, which is a very tough job to do. Reading through all of the nominations, you really get a sense that there are some terrific teachers in District 200. We have the honor of awarding three of them this year. One for early childhood elementary, one for middle school, and one for high school. This year, the Early Childhood Elementary School Distinguished Teacher Award goes to Deanna Bureau of Lincoln Elementary and I have some selected comments from the nominations. I'm always amazed by her energy and passion. She consistently helps the students make connections between the subjects they are learning and their everyday lives. I believe this helps them to have enthusiasm for what they are learning. My daughter is often shy to respond to questions, but Deanna has built her confidence and now she willingly raises her hand and participates in class discussion. She encourages students to push themselves, which builds confident learners. She is able to engage all 27 kids in her classroom and relate to each one of them individually and uniquely. She inspires them not only to be good students, but good people by demonstrating proper manners and teaching everyone fairly and positively. Deanna has dance time in her classroom, allowing the kids to constructively dance off her extra energy to stay focused. The dance time is not only some healthy exercise, but introduces the kids to music and rhythm. My son comes home excited to teach me and show me the songs of dancers he's learned in class. Deanna understands the challenges dealing with different skill levels and backgrounds. She creatively uses communication techniques such as group clapping methods and group phrases that unite the class so everyone can be productive. She creatively refers to her students as friends and encourages them to call each other friends. She has come up with creative reward systems that encourage the kids to achieve. The kids love the reward systems and are always proud to achieve their goals. Deanna is extremely involved outside the classroom too. She directs the fourth and fifth grade chorus. She helps with the Christmas musical. The inspired students in her classroom, she inspired students in her classroom to Irish dance, sing, and act. She is always part of the classroom parties assisting the parent helpers and she volunteered to perform at the PTA's Family Reader Theater production for the families in Lincoln Elementary. Deanna is currently enrolled in a master's program in education. She is presenting a workshop at a professional teachers conference in Denver this April. She is also offering a piece for a teacher's journal. She is definitely working to bring her enthusiasm, passion, and ideas to others. Finally, one nominator wrote, "She is an A-plus teacher and should be recognized for going above and beyond. She is fresh, smart, creative, trustworthy, respectable, multi-talented, influential, creative, and inspirational." I'd like to present the recognition to Mrs. Bureau. And this year, the Middle School Distinguished Teacher Award goes to Heidi Galassi of Edison Middle School. Heidi teaches all levels of seventh grade math, fast-paced, regular, and co-taught, and she does an outstanding job in each class regardless of the student's ability level. She has an amazing rapport with students and inspires each of them to try their best and continually improve their skills in math. She is incredibly enthusiastic and creative, but also shows a genuine concern for her students. Heidi is always looking for new innovative ways to engage her students. She has become an expert at using a smart slate as an interactive whiteboard. This allows her to move around the room and work with students rather than being stuck in front of the room. Heidi volunteered to pilot the use of a small portable document camera in her class. She can hold it above the student's desk to project their work onto the overhead screen. She will use humor as well as fun chants and songs to engage her students with the content she is teaching. Heidi recently applied to the TEACH program, a two-day summer STEM training offered, being offered by Northrop Grumman. This training will help regain additional knowledge about activities and lessons she can design to engage her students in more real-world problem-solving using math, technology, and collaboration. Also, she is a leader in her seventh grade professional learning community. Heidi consistently attends student activities outside of the classroom, whether it's volleyball, wrestling, or basketball, she can be seen at nearly every home match cheering on the students. In addition, she coaches track and intramural floor hockey. Heidi has a strong relationship with all of her students. She is warmly greeted by smiles and waves by every student with whom she is in contact, either as her teacher or their coach. I'd like to present this recognition to Ms. Galassi.
This is my daughter's graduation.
What time is it morning?
What time is it tonight? It's 9:00 AM? Yeah, 9:00 AM in Washington, yeah. I have to wake her up after.
For those of you who can't see her, God is sky and you have a look looking right at us here outside.
And finally, this year, the High School Distinguished Teacher Award goes to John Norata of Wheaton North. It was written about John in his nomination that he walks that line of teacher, friend, goofball, and musician. He confidently tells the kids that there is no reason their band shouldn't play at Carnegie Hall or at a national music festival. It's his belief that no matter where you go or what you do, you will always represent the Wheaton North bands with exceptional character and respect. He shows the kids that he is still not the best he could be by attending weekend clinics put on by his teachers and mentors. His strive for perfection rubs off on his students and in turn makes them demand perfection in their own playing. You witness this as a parent from the time of the first concert of the year to the last. They are inspired to get better, to become one, and they succeed. Imagine being in a classroom with 25 percussionists every day. Now imagine having to try to teach all these kids with different levels of skill. Again, remember, they are percussionists, a group not known for being on the quiet side. If that sounds impossible, you should attend the percussion concert held at Wheaton North. It is obvious that John uses very creative ways to get these kids to learn. The concert is an amazing mix of duos, trios, and ensembles playing drums, bells, timpani, and every other percussion instrument with names that many of us will never know. I'm not in class to see John's teaching habits. Having attended four concerts, I know they are there. Besides the normal classroom teaching, Mr. Norata continuously looks for experiences his band can have that will last a lifetime. In the past five years, the Wind Ensemble has auditioned for and been accepted to play at Carnegie Hall in New York and at Music for All Event in Indianapolis. He knew his kids were talented enough to be accepted to play and they believed in him. In addition, the marching band has played at Disney World and at the Bands of America Competition in Indianapolis. All of these events require a lot of extra time and planning on John's part, but he knew the lifetime of memories these kids would have outweighed the extra work. My daughter found herself and a lifelong group of friends through her experience in band. He helped her find a place where she can thrive as a musician and as a person. As a parent, that's all you want for your child, for them to find out who they are and to surround them with other good kids. That is fostered in all of John's bands. My daughter was John's unofficial teaching assistant in his percussion class. She respects his style of teaching, loves that he expects not only your best behavior but your best musicianship. I personally cannot thank Mr. Norata enough for how he has helped shape my daughter's high school years, ones that she will now look at with great memories. Besides being the director of the marching band in the fall and the jazz band in the spring, John always found tears to chaperone on the prom. He attends events that the kids in the class are performing in and will often be found meeting up with the band kids at local restaurants because they always invite him. I'd like to present this recognition to Mr. Norata.
Okay, we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Before you leave, first of all, I need to ask, are there any of the people who nominated these recipients for this evening? Any nominators, anyone? Stand up and wave. Thank you. And thank you to Mr. Root and Mr. Edgar for all of you. You know, we have many highlights in our board meetings and throughout the school year, most of them involving students and the achievements of students, but they obviously wanted that to happen without the excellent teachers and this is so wonderful to have this opportunity to focus on great teachers who are viewed that way by our very own community. So, thank you so much. It's really truly one of the highlights of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, it is our pleasure. We are proud to be able to inspire teachers and the foundation depends upon the support, physical, financial, and personal of the citizens of the district. And for anybody who's interested, you can find this on the web at new200.org. Please put this up.
Very good, thank you. As promised, teachers, if there are other places that you need to go, Malaysia perhaps, we won't be poorly able to give you, but you're certainly always welcome to stay. Thank you.
One additional recognition we have to see here that will conclude the recognition's achievements is Board Service Awards. And I'll start out briefly, and I'll certainly let other board members try to get us a seat. I would just like to say a personal thanks to both Mr. Johnson and Mr. Knicker to see me for their long-term service to the community. It's not easy being in the governor's seat for a long period of time. And just for the community to be aware, and I know the board knows this, Mr. Knicker was appointed in 1996 originally, was re-elected in 2001 through 2013 with over 13 years of service. Thank you, Mr. Knicker, for your time to District 200. Very much appreciated. Also, Mr. Johnson, originally elected in 1997, through 2013, for 16 years of service on this Board of Education. And for 10 of those years, from '01 to '11, as the Board President, thank you for your service. It does not go untested, I mean, thank you very much for all the time and effort you put to make a great education for the community. And I know it's not the only one, it's one in a million. Thank you both.
Thank you for getting us started on that. And, you know, we could probably sit here all night and just talk about how great it has been to serve with both of you. And I did say a few things last night, but that doesn't stop me from saying one tonight, I guess. But, you know, Ken, I have to say, I mentioned last night that District 200 blood runs in your veins. You know, you had that professional experience here, met your wife here. You know, you have children who grew up here and work here. And you have brought with you such a great enthusiasm for service. But it encouraged me today, as I was thinking, you know, you brought that culture from where the district was and you've been able to bring that forward. And it's so important to remember who we are, what our district culture, what our district story is. And you have that ability to bring us back to that and help us to remember at times why things happened the way they happened. You know, everybody can support the story of it, and you were there. So, and just your ability all the time to point out what the community has done for us. So, thank you very much. And Andy, I just, again, your hard work of service. I just think that when you talked about your dad, I always felt blessed to be a blessing. You know what? You are living out that life. So, well-taught son, your father had. And we have talked many times here about being president is being the servant of servants. And I don't know that I'm living up to that, but I will say that you are, nobody could live up to that the way you did. You have just been so wonderful in your leadership and thinking about all the things you led us through. I mean, you know, the Hubble and high schools, and you run for the elementary schools. Yeah, yeah. So, it's just, I think it's hard to imagine without the leadership here in this board, but I'm sure we're going to have some more interesting ones later in the years from this point on. So, I'll be quiet and let anybody else tell what they want to do.
Well, as part of the two working members of the board, I can remember I was working late in the spring of 1997. And he was working for a while. My wife Susan went to the Kennedy's for him, Wheaton South. You're so right. Actually, it's 10:00 in the morning, Wheaton South. Yeah, I know that. I asked her, and she said, "Mr. Johnson, you just got up and said, "I'm just worried because I'm honored, this might be great, beneficial for the kids." And that's my partner, though. And he's lived up to it, and he promises to do it in the last 16 years, every day. And I soon have, as far as I'm aware, the board. I experienced the common board. Just remarkable, remarkable achievement, I believe, because he's provided all of us in his last 16 years. I always thought my wife would perfectly approve of it. And again, it was very, so right, it reflects, I think, the culture of our community so well. Not only because we taught within the district, the words of our best administrators in the district, children of the district. We continue from time to time, because we've been one person who always thanks those who give us gifts. And we do that in a different fashion. But really, it is reflective of how Ken is a beautiful, despairing person. He appreciates his community, he just really sort of appreciates what Ken's done. So, I can't fault him for the wonderful service.
Jim and I were so beautifully, and I, when I got on this board, I, it was intimidating and scary. I had an interview in front of, I felt like I had been given a job, but I filled a vacancy. And I was so impressed with Andy's leadership, and I have over all these years. And both of these gentlemen are two of the most nicest, respected, quality, wonderful gentlemen that I've just been at a privilege to get to know. And I thank you for that and for leading and always having an even keel and sound lines. And you will be missed. We will really miss you, but we will remember what we envy and what we can't say. So, we'll always treasure you in the back of our minds. But thank you.
Well, I have been missing both very, very much. I have been crying recently, so I'm very tired of this. But I just have had so much pleasure and I've learned so much from both of you. I can't even begin to tell you how much you've meant in my life and in my personal growth. I've learned from you that there is no question that you can't tackle, no question that you won't tackle, no problem that you feel is not resolvable. And that's a good lesson. We've always approached things with faith and good judgment in an honest and forthright and ethical way. How else would we be in the top half of our suburban school districts academically and yet be in the bottom half in terms of our cost per student? I don't know how we could have achieved that magnificent phenomenon. It says that you've always been, had the goodness of the education of the students at heart, and yet you're always fiscally conservative, fiscally sound in your planning. And I think the numbers speak for themselves. And I think that your service has been just phenomenal. I wish you nothing but the best. I don't know how the man who's born with a planner is gonna manage. I'm sure you'll fill the gaps. I hope with less golf. And fun with your wonderful wife, who has been right here by us and supported us in the board. And Ken, I know you've got great kids, and I just am so anxious of how you're gonna have all that wonderful time just having your great kids. And I'm just looking so forward to seeing them grow. And I wish you just the best of luck and the best of health and recovery next.
Obviously, like Jim said, we're the rookies, but I want to say to Ken and to Andy, thank you for your guidance, you know, you were willing to accept me into the board. And we oftentimes defer on issues, but you still appreciate it. You recognize that and give me respect for things that may not be in line oftentimes. And many times they are, but most importantly, I think, is to know that you did accept me into the board two years ago, and what you've been is helping to give us guidance along the way. And that was valuable to me, so I appreciate your common respect and we share it.
The one thing that I would have brought up by Andy, he's a product of our school. He graduated from Warrenville South High School. No, Warrenville. What was it called? Wheaton North Village. So, we can call Warren Village. And still has many, many green and yellow foodlands around us home as well for the first time at that high school. Again, Andy, thanks for your service. It's been great serving all this time with you and everybody else. And we've had 12, I've had 12 years, as I said last night. 12 years of tremendous accomplishments, a whole lot of criticism. We stayed in course. We made it happen. And could have made it happen a lot sooner and faster if all of the Hubble things had not had tremendous amount of concern and spillage, if you would, coming from the community, to make sure we did it right. But it took us longer, and we're doing everything right today. And Andy, thanks for all of your time, your energies. I know with your schedule, many times joined us from afar. And appreciate you taking the time to do that as well with your schedule and so on. So, bless you and as well, so. Thank you.
Andy, you too. And we've met 16 years ago during that election in 1997. It was very contentious, as you can recall, when candidates and all the other stuff went on with that shenanigans there. We've had a great time for 16 years. Some people said, "Well, will you miss it?" I said, "Absolutely." They said, "Did you have fun?" I said, "99% of the time, yeah." There's still a great people working with us, so I will deeply miss this. Think I'll check the schedule of meetings and drive by maybe on Wednesday. And I'm ready to go golf or something. We have a lot of great things that I am very proud of where things are right now. Building standpoint, curriculum standpoint, student achievement standpoint. I really wish Jefferson had passed last night, but when the elementary didn't pass, came back and did something different, figured out what needed to be done, and still be forward and continue that. And that's all there is, with all the proud tribulations to people criticizing me, left, right, and center, for anything. You just keep focusing in the right direction, and we'll eventually, whatever that direction may be, it's critical, it's fighting, or it's buildings, we'll get there. So, thank you to everybody for all the time and work this evening. It's really been appreciated. And look forward to working with you in other ways to the future.
That concludes recognition to Jim.
And it was a very fun meeting, including you. Thank you very much. We don't have quite that much fun in the board table. Next, moving to public comments on agenda items, we have one. Patricia Herman, the virtual charter.
My name is Patricia Herman. I live at 1077 Creekside Drive here in Wheaton. I've been a resident of Wheaton for 33 years. I'm a retired public school teacher, so the issue of the virtual learning charter school proposal was very important to me. I was blown away by the preparation of this, of the staff and the board. And I was very, very pleased at the preparation for this important issue, understanding that you have many other important issues under the plate. So, thank you for that kind of preparation. But of the entire hearing, I felt that the comments and the questions of Board President Rosemary Swanson got to the heart of the man. She, her key point was, and what we, what everything boiled down to, was that there was nothing that the proposal could do for the students in our school district that wasn't already being done and done better. And for that reason, I want you to vote the proposal down. And for many other reasons, I want you to vote the proposal down. But the reason why I'm here is a tertiary issue. And that is that I am extremely upset at the idea that a state charter school commission could possibly overturn your decision, the decision of locally elected people who represent us and our community and know our community best. We have a long history of local control in our nation. And the fact that this appointed board could overturn the decisions of our elected board in our community, that they could overturn that decision, upsets me. And I hope that it upsets everyone here in the audience. Because I want everyone in the audience to fight against this idea. It's a terrible idea. It's undemocratic, and it's against all the traditions of our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we move to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Just a few things here this evening, a couple of topics, I should say. It may take a little longer, but it's just a few topics. The first one is, I would like to introduce Mary Davis, who's one of our current staff. Let's try to marry her hand up. Mary is on personnel report. She hired as one of our district administrators this evening, assuming the board approves the personnel report. She's our new assistant director for special education. She is currently a staff member of Jefferson, and filled in for Stephanie Parker. Stephanie moved over to central office temporarily in the middle of the year. And Mary did a wonderful job there, and now is going to be, you know, taking on a responsibility at the elementary level of special education. So, congratulations, Mary. We welcome you as a current member of the district administrative team. So, thank you. One other item I wanted to briefly mention is, since we last met over spring break, and I know the board's aware of this, is we had a loss of students at Wheaton North South High School. And if you ever miss me, if I didn't at least mention it, I will tell you that's the worst phone call any superintendent or principal or anybody working in this school gets when a student's life is lost. And I can just want to take this opportunity to commend our staff. And that is the point of my comments this evening. Every situation like those are always unique, anytime a loss of a student for whatever the reason is. And our staff is just phenomenal. I know Mr. Clay, I know he's already left, but his staff, they worked endless hours that week after spring break and actually over the weekend there prior to students coming back to make sure that we have appropriate environment for all of our kids happy at school. And certainly providing supports to make sure that, to help our students through the process of understanding loss of one of the students in the classroom. So, I wanted to just take the opportunity to comment on the great effort of Wheaton North South to provide that support. One final comment this evening, it might take a little longer, is I wanted to talk briefly about the referendum. Obviously, it's been referenced a couple of times this evening that the referendum was not heard by the community to rebuild the school, the Jefferson Early Childhood Center. But before I get into some of my thoughts over the last 24 hours, I do want to take a moment and thank a couple of members of the community who are here this evening. Dan Hyer, Susan Boop, if you could just stand for a minute. And I just wanted to say thank you as a couple of the lead people. Dan and his wife, Lisa Wagner, were the chairpersons of the citizens committee. And also Susan, sir, in a big capacity there to try to educate the community about early childhood education and the need for that facility. And I want to thank you both for, and please share with the other people in the committee, thank you for the great work over the last few months. Our work's not done. So, you know, the proposal that we put forward to the community was not approved. And I believe, I guess, the work of the board is going to continue here in the very, very future about how do we move forward. In other words, how do we take the information, the feedback, as it was such, by the community and move forward. And just a few thoughts that I, as I had 24 hours, I said to reflect from the superintendent's seat on what some of the messaging that I took away from this. One thing that I looked into today was that only one building bond issue in the state of Illinois yesterday was approved, that I can find, I verified. Across, there were 16 bond issues that I found online across the state. Only one was approved, and that was up in Deerfield, Deerfield High School District. This was their second time to the voters for that referendum. This was their second time to the voters for that referendum. It was very, very close. It was 52-48 or 51-49. They were still tallying final results when I checked this morning, but that was the only one that passed. Passing bond issues is not easy, and especially in today's fiscal situation in the state of Illinois, it's even more challenging. The economy, not in our country, but in the state and in our community, certainly has impact when people make decisions, which I certainly know about. And I think that's obviously something where as a board and a staff, we're going to have to consider as we rethink and we continue to strategize on how to make improvements moving forward for Jefferson in the near future. So, that fiscal uncertainty, I think, is one of those things. And certainly, I can sit here this evening and have all the answers and the thoughts. It's going to take some time to rethink why we did what we did and how we might be able to move something forward that the community could accept. Early childhood awareness, another thing. I can tell you, up until the day before the election on Monday, I still was having conversations with community members about what early childhood education is. Many people in the community still believe that it's daycare, that it's preschool, and that's not what goes on in that school. I mean, I know a lot of them, I appreciate the fire a little bit. But, but that theme was a consistent theme as Stephanie Harley and I went out into the community, Stephanie being the principal of Jefferson, and shared the information about the need for the improvement of that facility. So, I think that needs to continue. We're not there. I still believe that many community members are either, are under informed about what goes on in that school and the needs and the requirements that District 200 has. The other theme that, that I believe, as I reflected today, was other capital needs in the district. I do believe that's something that, for even this morning at the District PTA meeting, when I spoke about this topic, there were some questions that came up from some of the parents who were here this morning representing all schools in the district about, you know, what about some of the other capital needs? You know, Jefferson certainly has been identified, but there are others things, and we know it. We have a very thorough capital development assessment that we went through over the last year, and we know what those are. And I do think that's another theme that we as a board moving forward and staff need to think about before we go back out to the community and take a really hard, comprehensive look about how we Jefferson at all of our schools and to see what might be doable and what's something the community could raise. And finally, in summary of the referendum, is to engage the community. Obviously, we had many voters yesterday that did not like the proposal, as Chris was clear. And so therefore, it's going to be important for us to figure out ways to engage the people that were not happy with the recommendation moving forward and try to get that feedback so we can continually update and improve our facilities to have that positive impact on school learning that we all know about. So, those were my thoughts as I reflected on the referendum today. I know there's probably many more, and certainly, if any of the other board were a cop in on that topic these times, it would be, but from the superintendent's seat, it is something that'll be on my mind and that not only in the very near future, but moving forward and looking forward, working with board members that are returning and the new board members that have been elected, to come up with solutions that we can put forward to the community. So, at this point, that concludes superintendent's report unless there's any questions or comments.
Just echo what you said. I think you and the community did a fantastic job raising level awareness, early childhood education, that one existed. And if we had more time, that message may have gotten more ingrained in the community as to the need for this. So, I told Andy, don't beat yourself up too much. You couldn't have done much more in the face of all the misinformation and bad information and miseducation those out there also, and understanding fund balances, understanding we don't have $14 million in our pocket, that money for all intents and purposes doesn't exist to be used on Jefferson, can't be. We have a policy for fund balances, we're going to stick with it during our work. So, that money doesn't exist. So, we have to educate people and continue to often understand why we need that, why that must be, that it's good business, it's what people have had for years, not having fund balances in place. Now, we have it, now we're taking it for something else and encourage extra processes and other things. So, that piece, that continuous education process, we've been working on for years, last three years, balanced budget, great teachers contract, CDCI, all these good things happening. The more we get further like that in your education, which is what we do, the better it will happen next time we need to take care of Jefferson. But that early childhood proposal, that's key, and that will come forward next time. So, that's.
One of the things that I, that I came to realize throughout all this too, and from the number of people that spoke at the board table and also out of the community, is that the early childhood center, putting children in that, who have the challenges that we are mandated to take care of, we save money by putting them into the early childhood program because they grow up in that and they're assisted in such a way that we put them in regular education classrooms. And that percentage is extremely high for children who we do not have in special education after they've gone through the early childhood center. And I feel bad that the community didn't understand that, appreciate that, so as Andy said, part of the education process. I think we've got to make that pretty clear, that, that we actually do save money so we are not taking care of these children for the next 22, 21 years of their life until they get their 22nd birthday, that we get them into the mainstream, that they are able to grow up as in the regular education system. And I really think that can be made, I really support the made that concept up there. And I agree with Andy, I have $14 million in the bank, we had, we had priority to really set that money aside and to call our fund balance. And we were, like you said, highly criticized for running deficit spending in the early 2000s and so on, and now we're not. And I think we should have ourselves on the back for not touching that money and not using that money and keeping it there. And like you said, this people forget it's there, but we're certainly not, I don't think in a position to allow us to spend that. Two of you were part of the finance committee to establish that fund balance and to use that money when it came in nine years later after application. And I think we're in a good position right now. I really, I really support moving ahead with alternatives to the Jefferson program, to different ways of accomplishing the same thing that we tried to do once, and like Andy said, 99, we came back together and we did it with modifications and a better, possibly a more thorough education process on the items that we need to add to it. So, I think we can move ahead very safely and work with the Jefferson program. Thanks to Dan, the whole committee that worked on that, it's unbelievable how much time it takes to do that, and they did an outstanding job and will continue to use all of their efforts in the future moving forward.
I just wanted to thank personally Dan and Lisa and Susan for all the work you've done and all of the parents who, as I mentioned last night, many of them who are parents of Jefferson, have extra duties on their plate, and yet they came out and worked so hard, so thank you very much for that. I also really don't think that we've given enough recognition to Dr. Harris in terms of leading the charge, putting things together, and to Mr. Roman and the core team and Mrs. Cottrell, the core team and the teachers who helped put that plan together, as well as to Erica, who did a tremendous job of getting information out. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was out. To some of the points that were made, you know, as I've talked to people, I, I know that it's not because the community doesn't care. The community very much cares and has a special part, especially if people need some additional help. So, I do believe that, I'm not speaking out of mind to say that we are committed to make sure that we come back with a program, a plan to get 21st century facility for those children like the other children in this district have. So, we will be working with Dr. Harris on that. And, and I just did want to do one with that, because this whole grant statement has kind of, you know, I think had been very confusing to people. As you mentioned, Andy, you and Mr. Gambiani, my correction, you and Andy worked together to put together a fund balance policy that requires, what was the percentage?
25 to 40.
25 to 40. So, with that money in there, with the grant money in there, we currently have, what is the percentage, Jim? 27%. I am correct that you and I sat in the finance committee together as we looked at various funding options? And as you mentioned before, you sometimes have divergent opinions on the board table. You obviously, well, we know for the referendum, the rest of us vote yes. But I'm correct that using fund balance money, using that capital money was not anything that you were ever looking to do. Am I correct about that?
100% correct.
I just wanted to put up by that and ensure that I wasn't misinterpreting what the reason was, but I thought it was an important thing to get on the record since there seems to be a lot of discussion going around about it. But then, move on. Okay, we move on to the consent agenda. We have 14 items on consent agenda. Acceptance of a gift to Lowell Elementary School, acceptance of a gift to Madison Elementary School, acceptance of a gift to Pleasant Hill Elementary School, acceptance of district representative to the DA OES Board Directors, approval to post freshman sophomore English 1 level curriculum, approval of elementary math manipulatives, approval of IHSA annual renewal, approval of print services release and satisfaction agreement, approval of Amesware, AmesWeb software rule, approval of lease agreement on activity vehicles, approval to set the last day of school for the 2012-2013 school year, approval of meals payable and payroll, approval of minutes February 27th, special meeting, open and closed, February 27th, committee of all, March 13th, open and closed, March 18th, public hearing, open and closed, and approval to distort recordings of closed sessions prior to November 2011, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified flexified non-union staff. Are there any items that board members wish to remove from the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second, it's happened to Mr. Johnson.
Moved by Mr. Roman and seconded by Mr. Johnson. And are there any questions or comments up next?
Sure, for the last time. Somebody takes this over. We've got Lowell, Madison, and Pleasantville have done a believable job of supporting our schools and thanking the anonymous donors in some cases that we don't know, but they contributed a great deal of money to that and for that public thing. Just one point clarification, in your view, there was a revised version of that one item with the agreement. There's some minor tweaks that came in this afternoon. It was on the official agenda, you have a great copy of it, I guess.
And one other clarification, I think that's, is it English I level or is it first year English, is that intermediate level English curriculum or something?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's an English 1.
No, I ask a question too about the inclusion satisfaction, should it be moved? I appreciate the thought, the board was responsible. I'm super pleased with yours, but I have to answer my questions. Satisfaction, is it released?
All right, if there's no other questions or comments, I will call for the board to ask, I should welcome them on. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson? Yes, the consent agenda is approved as presented. All right, now we move to a series of eight action items, if I'm coming correctly. The first is approval of resolution to deny the Illinois Virtual Charter School of Moss Valley proposal. Dr. Harris, did you want to give us a little recap on that?
I would. Again, just to the board members' information, this has been a unique situation. It was presented to us a couple short months ago. As board members know, we hosted that hearing on March 18th. We have requested a reply from BLS by the end of the week. We can not get it until April 1st. I got it at 10 o'clock tonight after the board faculty had already been out. I have to advise the council, give us a 1,084-page document that came from it that did not address our specific questions. It was basically a revised proposal, as I presented as such. I have not had the time to read all 1,080 pages yet, but certainly planning to do it in the near future. I can tell you that the other 17 school districts that are involved in this charter school proposal as well have significant concerns, and I can't underestimate the word significant with this proposal. There is air in it all over the place, and it's denoted in this resolution that we are asking you to approve here this evening. I can tell you, it's even as latest this afternoon, there is activity in Springfield in the House of Representatives, the General Assembly Speaker at the House. There is some political activity going on in relation to that. There's a House Bill 494, just want to bring that to your attention, that it came out of committee today that is basically proposing a moratorium on virtual charter schools. And there's a lot of details behind that. I can tell you that our elected officials aren't involved in this at this point. It is our responsibility as a local board to move this forward. If you do approve the recognition here of this resolution to deny the charter request, I can assure you that this issue is not over, as our nurses and spoke this evening referenced, that I do anticipate them appealing to the State Charter School Commission. And I can, my understanding at least at this point, that it will not be individual hearings. There will be one hearing for all 18 school districts. That's at least my understanding today. Now, that may change, I'm not sure. And that will be a lengthy, maybe week-long or longer hearing at the Thompson Center downtown. So, this issue probably will not get here tonight at our board table. It will, we are following the rules and rights and state law in regard to this proposal that's put before us. I can assure you that staff is going to continue to stay on top of this. I am working collaboratively with the other 17 school districts, and I do anticipate more to come in this arena before this issue is resolved. So, if you do have any further questions, consider to try and answer them. I shared you a summary where I think it's at as of today, and I would, you know, certainly like order, approve the recognition.
Let's get a motion on the table first. Can we have a motion to deny? Moved by Mr. Johnson, is there a second? Moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mrs. Inteher. Are there any comments or questions for us?
With respect to the, with respect to this 1,080-page response, I think we, I would call it a supplemental response to the revised proposal, because I'm afraid that might threaten something. I think it's more, more, I would have it as a supplemental response in regard to, I believe this is, I mean, it's a sham, it's a 812, it's an operator school, a four profit, and it was done in New York Stock Exchange, that is abundantly clear through our, and I want to applaud the staff, the entire staff, the questions we came up with, right on, right in the fact that those two gentlemen, as nice as they can be, could have answered 75 to include some of the questions. Dan just shows for a sham in line with this proposal, so we don't doubt that I'm only able to focus on that and find out.
Well, Sam, I think we all echo your comments, so enough said, I think, and that's the end. I will call for the board. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottrell?
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Cambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, the charter school proposal request is denied. Next, we move to approval of agreement with TCPM for high school circuit fields replacement. Is there a motion to approve? Second. It was moved by Mrs. Intihar, seconded by Mrs. Cackill. And Dr. Harris, did you have something you wanted to close to?
Yeah, I know all board members did have the opportunity to review the report there. And I just want to share a couple other quick comments in relation to this. This field at both high schools, as you know, was put in place back in two thousand and three when the turf was originally put down at both schools. We knew that there was an eight to ten year lifespan on that. We are at the tail end of that, after ten years of use. The warranty on the turf that was under is expired by two years. We have had local representatives look at our surfaces and identified several fireware rips, worn down, high traffic areas. It has served us very well for the ten years. As light with any type of synthetic surface like this, there is a time to replace it. And after consultation, not only with the experts in that area, but also our staff, our athletic directors, principals, coaches at both high schools, we pushed the recommendation forward to have this replaced. They won't point it, and that's what happens when employing services is designed for what goes on in there during the day and to eat, as well as after school. It needs to be replaced and it's time to do it. And I knew that, we knew that that was the case ten years ago. And we are prepared to move this forward at this time. So if there is any other questions with that, certainly, Mr. Roman and I can answer those. But just wanted to provide that little background. It's a large expenditure, this item and the next one too. We did split those two things. Because the removal was not part of the nationwide bid process. So we did have to get separately the removal of the old carpet. And you did see that on these two items. So if there's any questions, certainly can answer them.
And for the state of those listing at home, the cost on list is seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, nine hundred and forty, or seven hundred and thirty-seven, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Thousand. Nine thousand.
Sorry. Said it wrong. Why?
Seven hundred?
Okay, yeah. Seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents. Thank you all. Now, this is a budget expense. If there's no other discussion, I will call for the board.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes, Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Cambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, motion is approved. Next, we go as Dr. Harris said to a related item, which is the approval of turf removal project bid. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. Moved by Mrs. Intihar, seconded by Mrs. Cackill. Are there any questions or discussion?
Yes, this is budget expense.
Yes.
Cost.
Yeah, okay. This budget expense and the cost is eighty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. All right, if there's no further questions or comments, I will call for the board.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes, Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Cambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, motion is approved. Next, we have the approval of performance contract for the University of North Hill South High School. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve. Moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Knicker. Any discussion or a little bit of, I mean, we talked about this in other meetings, but maybe just a quick.
Just briefly, I, board members are very familiar with this. We have talked a bit about this in the last two meetings. And this will be consistent with our performance, education performance contract that we've done this past summer. And we've got it specifically for Union Chapel. These two items here, the one we just approved, and this one here would be our only capital projects that we anticipate this summer at this time. Certainly, we'll continue to bring things forward if we can afford it. But right now, we should, so if there's any questions on that, it's okay.
My question again, is the budget an expense? Okay.
I just think the board for the committee, now that this is a budget.
If there's no other questions or comments, I will call for the board.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Cambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, the motion is approved. And now we move to the appointment of a law firm. And I know that Dr. Harris and Mr. Roman and Mr. Knicker can probably tell us a lot about that. But first, let's get a motion on to the floor.
I'll second that.
Okay, and again, to bring the entire board up to speed as well as, maybe, two years ago, Board Education decided to go out and take a look at our services that we retain on a regular basis. Last year was our auditors, this year is our legal services. And we spent a significant amount of time over the last few months reading proposals and also meeting with law firms. In fact, we put out the request for proposals and we received thirteen proposals that came back from law firms throughout the Chicago metropolitan area. What was that? Thirteen, that's correct, I think, I got my numbers correct. So the numbers today and yesterday, I didn't make sure I did right. And we interviewed six of those firms. And after those interviews, we did narrow it down to and really took a harder look at those. And this is not an easy decision. And it is, we rely on these professionals to provide these services for. I do have the recommendation moving forward here. It's Robin Schwartz, which will be a change in our legal firm, from the firm that we currently use to a new firm. Mr. Joe Procoski is here this evening. And I'm going to invite him up to the podium just to comment briefly. And I know Mr. Roman, Mr. Knicker probably would like to share thoughts as well. But I would at least like to introduce him from the firm of Robin Schwartz and let him talk just a minute about their proposal to report.
First of all, thank you for having me on today. It's a great opportunity to build the energy and the dedication in the district. So it's very exciting. I'm the athlete firm, I'm honored that this vote is before you. We look forward to working with you, District. Very excited about this. We view our representation as a partnership with our clients. A partnership with your district if you approve this motion. We will learn your goals and objectives in the course of our utmost dedication.
Thank you very much, we look forward to working with you. And comments from Mr. Roman and Mr. Knicker?
I think I've shared with the number of you how much I enjoy being on this side of the table and then to turn to the other side of the table. Thirteen, we're all pretty thirteen people invited to this presentation. Sixteen to meet with us. I was overall impressed with the quality of the presentation, my office as well. But the presentation by Robin Schwartz, I can't admit the presentation by Francy was above the other four. And he now has a very hard choice between the two. The restructuring of Robin Schwartz proposed is very attractive. It's very attractive and might come better than a fee proposal we received from Francy. And with the reputation that Robin Schwartz has in the education law, the number of offices that have across the state. And the staffing that he proposed for us, for our district, we think that is, we would be appropriate for much to choose. I'm excited about our effort with Robin Schwartz. I think they'll do a wonderful job. While I'm checking the number of office system that going to the floor to not have Dr. Harris putting on that. But I'm interested in what's on the business ships. And it's been a long relationship between Francy and me. For the reasons I emphasize in my little presentation, I hope that Robin Schwartz and came on as well as Robin Schwartz.
I'll just comment briefly on Joe as well. I did call several colleagues throughout the Chicago metropolitan area. And that's one of the concerns we had this evening through all the different proposals to maintain local services we've used to. And it was clearly that that service will be there. And that certain restructuring proposal presented to us by Robin Schwartz, and that's what it boiled down to. And we do believe it's the best thing for the district to move forward retaining and it's our client, for us.
I want to say thank you to Dr. Harris and Mr. Roman and Mr. Knicker because I know you've put in a lot of time to help around us. And I think, I thank you for that. And I welcome our firm. And I want to say, I know this was a lot of work. It took a lot of your personal time, Mr. Roman and Mr. Knicker. And I know you're doing this to be as good as we can be with, with, again, I toward getting the best value for the dollar, the worst value. So I appreciate that and just say thank you.
One final thing, I forgot staff over here. I know Mr. Farley, I don't want to, Dr. Rammer and Miss Panopoulos also put in a significant amount of time to add checking references and doing it. So it was a team effort, so I almost, sorry, my colleagues over here. So want to make sure, yeah, thank you for helping me remember.
And as long as you're thankful, I think it was a great opportunity for Dan Francy and the firm for the many years of fine service. And we had some very challenging conversations with them about different things over the last ten, twelve years. I think they did a fantastic job, most John Elias, Vegas Delias, Paul Melchapp, the list goes on. Many, many, many people did a lot of their work for us when I was here. So it's never easy when you lose it. And when it does come down to very competitive terms in the discussion, that's, that's what makes companies better to move forward. So please express our thanks to them for that. One more, I assume.
One of the things I do want to comment on, I heard a lot of this, like I mentioned before, is we will be transitioning if this is approved this evening. And we will, there will be some projects that Francy will see through. Some things that we're in the middle of that makes sense. It won't be a lot, but just so board members are aware that we will see some of those items through. There will be very few, but there will be some of them. So, and actually, with our reorganization coming up the next couple of months, we will, we will, both parties will be retaining because we will have some transition activities going on over the next couple of months.
You know, for one part, I couldn't have been more comfortable with Mr. Roman's professional background and expertise coupled with Mr. Knicker's understanding of the one relationship that we had with firms I talked about earlier. And I felt like between the two of them, it was a good partnership to come up with the best choice for us. But it is, it is a change for us and we do look forward to working with you. So thank you very much. If there's no other further comments, I will call for the.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Cambiani? Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, the motion is approved, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Next, we move to the approval of transportation services contract bid. Can I have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Roman and seconded by Mrs. Intihar. Are there any, is there any, this is another change for us in the district. This is another change for us, that is the A.
Yes, this also is a pretty significant recommendation coming forward here. As the board knows, since when, several years since we have went out to bid for transportation the last couple of years, we were able to withhold our contract. So we were anxiously awaiting these bids to take them in. And you do see the recommendation here this evening is to switch to a new transportation vendor for our regular transportation and our industry special education and to retain StepTran as our outer district provider. This will require, if approved, a significant transition. That I know Mr. Farley is prepared to work with all of our building principals and assistant principals across the district to make this transition as smooth as possible. I can tell you from best experience with this type of transition takes place, there always are some challenges. But we will do, make every effort, knowing to work with our new vendor if this is approved to handle our staff and building level, make sure that transportation for our students is done efficiently and well done on the first day and the day after. So again, Mr. Farley, is there anything else that you want to share at this point regarding that? I know you were deeply involved in this process. Any questions?
Questions, I do represent Mr. Francy here. It's my thought. If there's no further questions, I'll call for the board.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Cambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, motion is approved, congratulations. Next, we move to the adoption of the reservation for reduction of force dismissal and termination of certified STEM. Is there a resolution that needs to be read? Okay, Mr. Knicker?
Let me just ask, how much of this case do you believe you're arguing? All of them.
It's a short period.
It's a short period. No problem. This is a resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-attended teachers other than five-year probationary teachers. Being resolved by the Board of Education of Community Unit School District Number Two Hundred, Page County, Illinois, as follows. This Board of Education hereby determines that those teachers listed on Exhibit One attached Tier Two and made a part hereof will not be re-employed for the following school term and are hereby dismissed as teachers in this school district effective at the end of the present school term. The President and Secretary of this Board of Education are hereby authorized and directed to get the persons listed on Exhibit One by personal service or, if timely, personnel service cannot reasonably be affected by certified bail, return seat request. A written notice of this Board's decision to dismiss them effective at the end of the present school term. The notice shall be substantially in the form of Exhibit Two, attached Tier Two, and made a part thereof. This resolution shall be enforced and affect upon its adoption.
Thank you, have you heard the resolutions, there are motions to adopt? Second. Moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mrs. Cackill. Is there anything you wish to say about this or?
This is pretty standard in relationship. We don't have any target risk. This is our part-time people, our one-year contact people. And while our all-inclusive staff is on air, as you probably saw, until we get solid enrollment numbers at our elementary level and our enrollment targets at our middle school and high school classes, then we will re-employ right this forward, like a date. But certainly, this is a significant situation to make sure we're not overstaffed and we'll bring people back in order.
Just to clarify, we anticipate that many of these positions will be re-added.
Yes. Yes.
There's no further questions or discussion, I will call for a vote. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Caike?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, the resolution is adopted.
And lastly, we move to approval of a student expulsion. We previously discussed this in closed session, so I am looking for a motion to dispel student E2012-13-02 for the remainder of the school year, held in bayous, provided that he enrolls in and completes the program in an alternate placement. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
And I will call for a vote. Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Caike?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, motion is approved.
Next, we move to a oral report on the Roman study update. Dr. Harris.
Okay, thank you, board members, we do have this one report here this evening, and it has to do with our enrollment study, this is directly related to one of our board goals that had super technicals in relation to taking an updated approach to looking at enrollment. It had been several years, and it was time to give updated numbers looking at demographic study for many years, and coming to 200. Mr. Farley has taken the lead from a staff perspective, and had gathered information this evening, as many of you know, you received the copy of this report, it's a lengthy report with a lot of data and information. I know, Mr. Farley has, I had a conversation with Dr. Castara, who completed the report for us, and I will turn it over to him and let him walk through some of the details and the highlights of what this report has shared for us. Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Dr. Harris, I managed to make a 200-page report, you did a document of 100 slides, so, we're last, thank you for the reason, my point, I'm fine with everyone. The intent, the intent of this, doing this study, obviously, it's been an ongoing report, it's been overplanned in the district, but we didn't able, really to manage up with some of the districts and...
Every area.
Districts and, districts and super technicals relative to managing our long-term financial stability, resources of the budget, and obviously, you know, when the, comes to this, that we wanted to do is to add a process to review this on an ongoing basis, so this was the genesis of this study moving forward, it's kind of a new, fresh look at it, so all of these are addressed under these goals that are on the website. The benefits of the enrollment study, obviously, building necessity needs, obviously, from time to time, schools will have hurdles and large enrollment rooms that'll go through for various number of reasons, and we want to be able to have some pictures in place to do that, so obviously, building space needs is a very high concern, and one of the benefits from this enrollment. Second, staffing, if they come, we're going to teach them, and we need to put fresh faces in front of them, and we need to know how much staff we're going to have, obviously, staffing, the largest cost that we have as a district, that's a very important factor as well. And finally, all of the ties in, all of the finances, everybody, but financially, what are the financial costs associated with the building or space needs, what are the financial costs associated with staffing, so those are the three main reasons why we, you know, feel about doing these types of enrollments. As Dr. Harris mentioned, Dr. John Castara, an ad referrer from North Carolina University, has been doing these for a number of years, so he's got some good background and good information for our school district, he takes our current data, and I'll talk a little bit about how he comes up with his projections. Again, he meant, did a report in 2008, and then in 2004. So this other report is basically updating a 2008 study, kind of doing a full study to bring it up to speed. Dr. Castara reviews population, the housing dynamics that are going on, obviously, housing, Mr. Caike, I'm trying to tell you, the housing dynamic is not so dynamic, but it may be getting better, it looks at some of the population and housing dynamics, he will call the cities, villages, towns, shops, county, and pull that information, help with that, assist with that part of it. He obviously looks at the recent enrollment, for study patterns that we've had in the district since he last did the report, and looks at our current enrollment, and uses that, and to make his enrollment projections. So, a little bit of district background, current enrollment's around 13,240 students. The district does have a changing dynamic, and I think we can tell that to the board, obviously, we've seen the scenarios in SES, growing EL population, we're up to 32% ratio of minority percentage in the school district, and mainly in our Hispanic growth, if you look at, since 2002, we're almost tripled, looks on Hispanic students, our school district, and plays a very important role, and as you read through the report, you'll see they had talked a little bit about how it impacts population in the school district. One of the first enrollment trends that he looks at is our kindergarten enrollment. It's been somewhat volatile the last five years. The 2012, 13 enrollment was the highest enrollment in the last 11 years, at 907 through kindergarten students. Three years ago, I think we were on 968, but we've been in the 800s, pretty historic over the last six or seven years, so we've had, we've had these flips, so, Dr. Castara noted in his report, says, is that an anomaly? Maybe, maybe not. Obviously, there's plenty of news, and you hear news about the changing population and where our all the children are going, because the numbers are going down, and I'll talk a little bit about what that means to our district as well, but he hedged on the amount, he's not sure, he thinks it is, but he's, you know, I guess the best part about being a demonstrator is you can say, I don't have a crystal ball, so that he does, does give that, I would think, that we're on, I'm loaded as an anomaly, so obviously, we're getting started with the preliminary enrollment now, kindergarten enrollment, so we're gathering that data, looking at that, you know, we want to get new students in, we have to confirm residency and things of that nature, so we don't know the number yet, and obviously, that number will change as we get closer to the school, we'll have some parents who made their kindergarten coming in that have sat through two or three kindergarten enrollments, and they don't go to the enrollment, so we, you know, we'll find students coming all the way out to us, so that will be, we'll be targeted, as we get to that information, obviously, factors into how we staff. Some enrollment trends in the school district, and I don't think this is a shocker, or any, you know, the board is all looking at what's happening in the school district, enrollment in elementary has declined since 1997 and 2008, as well, middle school enrollment has declined over time, and the high school enrollment, which peaked at 2005, 2006, at the time, you know, we're completing high school projects, you know, we knew we were getting through a very large model in high school, also at the time university at the seams, as you all have acknowledged, since we built the autonomy, the enrollment, that was good, it's here, there, at that point in time, and in the future, you know, we always see pieces, but I like to say, that will, you know, look at the history of those things over time, we do grow up and down. So some factors of enrollment change that he looks at for his report, obviously, the easy one is the graduating class, students that are leaving us in 12th grade, and who's coming in and replacing that class, it comes with, obviously, you know, those are some of the factors that he's considering as part of enrollment change. Net migration and retention of students, where, you know, when are students coming in, you know, we may have students that don't start kindergarten with us, but we, you know, show up in first grade, we may have students that aren't here, they age, and all of a sudden go up to high school, so he's looking at all of those types of migrations, transitions as well, as he looks at training to do his projections. And the change in special education, obviously, you know, again, what's been the media, I think you saw, the trigger had an article, and I wanted 50 children, and I noticed it was being on the autism spectrum, and see, so every time the report comes out, that number seems to drop lower and lower, and we're seeing that, so he does, you know, talk a little bit about the special education factor as well.
Mr. Farley, you mean the ratio drops lower and lower, so the rate of, just by your side?
Yes, thank you for correcting that. Some other interrelated factors that play a role in projection, future fertility rates and results in family size is one factor, and he talks a little bit about what we've seen lately with the economy and such, and where, you know, children at, that the current rates where they're at have declined. He sees, he noted in his thing that there's little change in middle income to urban families in the next five years, again, we have a diverse population, so it's not entirely our district, or whatever, at one point it used to be, so that's one of the factors that interrelates and all these play a role in projections. Second, the impact of Hispanic, as I mentioned, again, with the Hispanic population growing, in our school district, that also brings in, it plays a factor as well in overall enrollment in the school district, so that's important to, as well. Again, mentioning just the decline in births from 1999 to 2000, I'm seeing, again, I think if you look in his report too, he'll talk about projections, and, you gotta remember the students that I think are more now are in their schools for another five years, and I think he cites very clearly, that we really, for the elementary age level students, we really have to take a look, probably more often, as we watch this around, and the elementary level, or report to report, because it's that, it's that topsy-turvy at the time, and we have to really keep a keen eye on it, he mentions that in his report as well. Mentioned the immigration, student housing, turnover of existing housing, obviously, when the market changed dramatically in 2008, a lot of empty nesters were not moving, they, their homes were losing value, and so we're going to see quite a turnover in houses, but you know, at some point, we hope that the market comes back and, and have to do a lot of empty nesters, but you will see some location in housing in the district. Housing development, another, obviously, very stalled economical factor that's going on, not only in our school district, but around, around the state and around the country. For the most part, our district is built out, you know, having, searching for land, found out very appropriately during a couple days, that there isn't a lot of green space left, and the school is, has a lot of green spaces off the dash rolls, you know, that there's a large number with the forest reserve, foundings, schools, parks, churches, that there's not a lot of land left, and in our school districts, for the most part, we're built out. However, there is new housing that is out there, and you don't have to look too hard to see, find some of it. The Legends on Motherfield Road, if you're all familiar with that, there is still about 35 lots, people got, in the, I don't verify this, but down Rose, at City of Wheat, the Legends still has about 30 to 35 lots, and we see the market start to turn around, you could see housing building there. Amberwood is the property on Orchard Road, that is the old Sunny Ridge Farm, not Farm, Sunny Ridge, yeah, it's there. Silver Blen is at Northridge, Northridge is over by Stanberg School, it's right on Dairy, there's small homes that could go in there. Silver Blen is the property that is right off County Farm Road, it's 45 homes, single family homes, that could be built, they're still going through zoning and so on. Romanian Homes is on, and they're a firm that was building, like, any buskers out to the west, and were building here for homes, and they decided to come back into more established communities, build three or $400,000 affordable homes, that are attracted, and attracted because of our school district, their works. So, the impact of the Legends, obviously, has an impact on Eastbrook Elementary School, as would Amberwood. Silver Blen has an impact, probably the largest impact, it would be Pleasant Hill Elementary School, Northridge would have some impact, 12 homes over by Stanford Elementary School. There's also other pockets of, of development going on, that we're starting to see pop up around the community, but these are the big ones, so these are ones where obviously, we have to find Eastbrook, Pleasant Hill, Washington remains a player, or Keaton and I, as well as Franklin. The other thing that's worth noting, again, is slowing down some of it, does, you can see a resurgence of Teradon to rebuild, and he cites the community, the elementary schools that, that he feels were the, the Teradon communities, Hawthorne, Longfellow, Lowell, Washington, Harrison, Lincoln, Aspen, and where, all of those elementary schools, he cited as schools, so you could see that Teradon, I think, occurring in neighborhoods where where homes are low and, and built brand, you know, when you see that around your community, probably around here as much as you see it in, like, a Brown, where it seems pretty problematic there as well, but, you know, I guess you have to keep an eye on this Teradon to see how that, how that goes, so, that's obviously something we'll keep an eye on.
How many in Amberwood, approximately, do you know?
I don't know the number, I think it's less than 20.
Less than?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty big homes, and pretty big blocks, I can call the number on 20. So for the purpose of the assumption, this is again something from prior reports, I will look relatively familiar. Dr. Castara, again, being a demonstrator, giving us some ranges, sets up three different ranges for the schools we could use. One is the Series A, which is probably the absolute minimum that we'd see in any particular school in the district. Then Series B, which is the most likely, is just out in the middle of ground, and then the Series C, which is probably the maximum, you can see, and there's a number of factors that go in, and all the factors that I talked about, they go under where he, he plots the A, B, and C series for our schools, so, again, when you, when we look at this, we're always looking at B, but we have to be mindful of C as well up there. The first item I want to show you is K5 for our school's chart, and as you can see, it shows enrollment bump back in the mid 90s, and then it's gradually come down, if you can see it okay, the red, the red series is the C, B is the middle, which is blue, and the green is the Series A, so again, obviously, they line up accordingly, but you can see with our current track, the B keeps our K5 at 1% moving forward here for the next 10 This next chart is middle school, and again, you can see, it shows some decline moving forward the next five years, and then it starts to come back up a little bit, again, obviously following somewhat what's happening at the elementary level, again, you can see the spike in enrollment in middle school, followed the spike, followed through the elementary school, and then gradually decline. You know, the Series B line on this one is obviously, it's got a little bit more flexibility in it, moving the next 10 years, but it's pretty level to live where we are right now. And finally, the high school, that obviously you're getting following, that urban came through the elementaries, you can see that, that enrollment peaked back in the mid 2000s, it's gradually settled down a little bit, and the B level, we're going to see some, a little bit of continual decline here going forward. So what does that mean to the district overall? You can see that the overall enrollment of the district in late 90s or 2000 peaked, and then it gradually started to decline, the B kind of keeps us flat, so we're losing a few, few students that are assigned in the second quarter. He summarizes this, but you can see that our enrollment, you know, over the next 10 years is going to be pretty flat in the district. I will mention again, that the schools we're keeping an eye on, that reached out, all the principals got this report, and I said, specifically, look at their schools, and I immediately called the three I was concerned about, and concerned with the ones that kind of jumped out, and I said, if I look at the C, you're, you're going to be retired, and that's Franklin, Washington, and Eastbrook, so, obviously, Pleasant Hill could be a player, some things happen more quickly with the housing noise, you know, that moves, that have been trying to follow, what's happening, I feel that they're more concerned, close to the road right now, I think. So, watching what's going on there, and trying to figure out when those houses are going to start to be built, I heard that we're going to start in February, and there's still anything going on, I'll let you ride by, you know, but, again, so those are the three schools that we're going to be definitely keeping an eye on, and we've had the conversations already, as soon as this report came through, and will, and all three principals responded, said, yes, I'm seeing the same thing, and we'll definitely keep an eye on that. In summary, on page 44, Dr. Castara's pretty much summarized what we're looking to see, is that we're looking at around... and that we're looking at around, just around twelve thousand hundred students. And you're ten years out in comparison to thirteen thousand and forty that they have now. So we're not seeing a large decline over the next ten years, people need to be pretty, pretty steady. To which my comment to Dr. Czarba is, I've seen contributing articles that said, you know, birth rates are probably, you know, what, you know, should I, should I be concerned that, you know, we're going to be more in the A level, why, why it's, this is a little counter to what I see here in the report. And he said, acknowledge that the articles that are out there about births in the moment are accurate to some degree, but there is issue, but he said, you always have to go back to the factors I find out about the level of quality of your school district that you're going to draw. You may have renewed some of that issue as far as what's going on with birth rates. He also mentioned the impact of the Spanish families and that your role acting plan, your school district, kind of countered some of that information that you may be seeing. So I'm sure that's one of the questions you may have had, that's one of the questions that I had, and which I'll try to ask him to comment on that for me as well. I'll bet you can get a little bit about that part of it. So, but he feels pretty firm on numbers with what we're seeing here. Probably the school that we're seeing is significant, again, I know it's a different story, but the biggest decrease to be born in the south, potentially they could see it on top to around nineteen hundred, little nineteen hundred students over the next five to ten years. So again, we'll keep an eye on that as well. Again, when we start to get further out, obviously we have to keep an eye on that and see, see what's happening. So moving forward, where do we go from here? We've got this report, historically we've looked at it, tried to keep an eye on enrollment, see where we need to make adjustments where necessary, schools don't have a set, the boundary changes, those things, those dangers. So going forward, what we're going to do is, this is all part of all those four enrollment advisory committee. That committee will be chaired by Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations and the Director of Public Relations. So Eric and I will be chairing this committee, and will include on that committee stakeholders, which will include staff, which is obviously important to have here. But on the committee will be staff on all levels, parents, obviously definitely important, and then also community members. And then that committee will then report back, and they've got Assistant Superintendent of the Board of Education as we move forward. Again, always wanting to look ahead and see what's coming and be able to predict as best we can the enrollment barriers of the schools, the adjustments that the committee is going forward. Down to one of the slides. I'll take a question.
Very good, Ian, I commend you on the font size that you use to work much better than in the classes. So thank you very much. Questions for board members or further comment?
Nice talking to you, as always. Question, going back at this projections before, you've done this four times now in the last fifteen years or so?
I believe two thousand eight, two thousand four, and late ninety-nine or two thousand, right?
And I know, I don't have it handy, but I do recall every time we went back to him, he was pretty direct within that way. So if some schools are going to go up to higher or lower, you know, in total, pretty direct. How often should this be done from your professional perspective? Something where you should plan for your four years, or just what you're going to run around and you need to discount these counts if people say that to you?
Yeah, probably over four to five years is probably fair. Again, I did take notice of this, you know, counting that we need to be keeping a close eye on elementary so maybe, you know, update that part of it or look at that a little more closely.
And I was just saying, along those lines, maybe something to put in the core policy that you need to have over four years, so something along those lines, something worth you to worry about.
I think that is a good point, Mr. Johnson. And I can tell you, you know, usually I, my partner, Dr. Scherzer, in the past, many school districts around Chicago are very used to him. That's why he is very, very familiar with all these patterns that Mr. Frum referenced. And five years, this data's pretty accurate. You get past that, and it gets real soft real quick. There's too many factors, you know, back in the way, he didn't, last time we did this was prior to the economic collapse, so, you know, and then all those factors, and then it did. And that's why it's a moving target sometimes. And so I would give, that would be my suggestion moving forward. Now, one of the key aspects too is to make sure you take this report and actually look at what it's related to, and also those factors in the community, all those, those intangibles play out. So that's why I think one of the things we need to do moving forward, recommendation is to have a standing committee, superintendent committee that works on this and looks at it and reports a little more, and, and, you know, comments about public facilities, staffing, you know, budgetary types of things. And that's a real key piece. And if we do need to tweak something about that, then it's not news, you know. It will be, we'll have to engage community people as well as staff on this, and we can predict these things, you know, instead of all of a sudden just recognizing something, all of a sudden you got a problem situation or a kind of a scenario, and it's very important to make sure we do that moving forward.
Thanks again, this was a good synopsis of the big report. Are we, I know there was a question brought up before the election about the Czarba study and what it predicted for the Jefferson and the Chatham Center. And I know the prediction in the report that our numbers that were produced needed some interpretation really before being presented to the community in terms of the size of Jefferson. Will we be coming out with something that actually puts those numbers, it changes that data into information so that we can really understand the relationship of that, of those numbers to reality? And if we get that done, maybe in the next, maybe have this committee look again and figure out a good way?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, get the committee to do that. And then are you anticipating in terms of community membership, at least at the start, you mentioned that Franklin and Washington and Eastbrook will be potential. That's, that's, are you anticipating bringing those parent volunteers into that community from those particular schools?
And/or staff to?
As staff to, yeah.
So yes, Mr. Frum, you referenced a few, you know, if you look through those charts specifically, you reference a few schools where they're highlighted ones that we need to pay attention to. Clearly, we do have to have and/or staff, and either community members or parents that has a pulse on that in those particular buildings, no doubt about it. I would really prefer that this committee look at this and be able to analyze it. I can tell you of the early childhood data, that you asked that question. If you look at that, and he has one chart in there, and it's consistent, it's flat. Now, but it's flat now in relation to what the actual enrollment of it, and there's factors to that. We have a running enrollment in Jefferson. So that's the beginning of the year numbers. It does not include our tuition-based students. It does not include our speech and language students, our ancillary programs. So this is just students, you know, and he's taking a hard number there, looking at, you know, often, not all of those are the factors. And there, I think the number's like one eighty, one seventy-five, one eighty. But we, yeah, but we know our enrollment right now, our total enrollment of Chatham is three hundred and sixty-five, three hundred and seventy students. So you're going to, because of all these other factors that play into that.
I just, I just would like that to be available to the public in a way that they can understand it. I mean, it's hard for us to even, you know, make predictions based on that, but I think that it's important that the people don't take those hard numbers as some people did in the selection, and use them in an incorrect way, or interpret them as something, you know, that we only have a hundred students and we're asked to build a building for three hundred and fifty. And I, that was, that was what came out, and I don't think that's fair to, it's not a fair representation of what is going to go on in that building. So it'd be nice to take that and get that information out there and include that with updates as we go forward.
That absolutely, there we are.
And I think there's really two populations we have to look at, is the special ed population as well as the, you know, law population.
Now, with respect to the special ed population, another factor that we can see Dr. Czarba really address in the report is that, but you referred to one, with increased protection of our business sector children, we can expect, couldn't, should we anticipate a higher percentage of our three-year-old population being diagnosed with eating special needs? Even though that higher population would not be your higher percentage of that population, meaning special needs. Does Dr. Czarba, do you know, would have any way to gauge that, judge that, except beyond his scope?
Give you a bit of that in scope, but that's something.
I was going to let you comment on it. I mean, that's, that's clearly a phenomenon that is going on, and we see it every day. Do you have a quick comment on that?
No, I would just say that you're exactly right. And even if you look at problems, if it is one in fifty, then clearly the number of students is really going to increase, even if, say, we had a hundred students with needs in general. More than likely, of course, like, three substudents who got to be greater in that category, for example. So out of those hundred, we can still see more. In general, yes, we are overall seeing some students with needs even increasing in our school, in our schools. And this year, one of our middle schools had, we had, we're starting to track our moving students, and we had twelve students this year alone who moved into a middle school, which could be a caseload for a whole teacher. So it's something that we're really paying attention to at all levels, and we're really starting to track moving students.
I think that's a good point, and that is a staffing issue that she referenced there. I mean, that's where a lot of this plays into it, and that has really, the graphic piece plays into it. I mean, there's a range of factors here, not only of the pre and four-year-old, but also middle school and so on. So we have to, so that's why I think the importance of this committee to constantly analyze this data pieces, of what the real data is compared to what the projections are.
That makes sense. Again, if you had to go to page thirty-three, if you remember the number on the report, he didn't speak specifically to trying to guess on the formulae, projection of pre-K and special ed. And he said it's not always going to be a factor at the moment, you know, there's, there's, you know, it's a turkey croquet, and it's not always going to be, you know, following home trend per se. So I got a section, there's a good one there that doesn't follow up as well.
Doctor Chris, when are you anticipating going out and establishing a committee?
I'd say very soon. Obviously, it's summertime, sometimes it's challenging to find people willing to volunteer for later July. But we certainly can begin to have my staff. I would anticipate this is going to be an important group with our facility work that I referenced already this evening, to make sure that we do have this information. And we have, or early in the fall, taken a look at what actually happens in, you know, in September. Our classrooms, all kids come back to school, as the report says here. And I anticipate that this September, October, to be a part of, you know, at one of our board meetings and in a report fashion to see where we're at. That will be an initial look, but, you know, obviously this will be an ongoing group. That's my initial thoughts today, and, you know, we will take a look at that. And, you know, to make more, because July is not an easy age for school districts. So we'll certainly be trying to get as many people involved as we possibly can.
Well, thank you for the report. Next we come to great reports, we have one, the Foyer Report. Reports from board members, are there any things board members wish to comment or report on?
I, I do have one thing that I thought I wanted to talk about just briefly, and we'll talk about it more as a board at some later time. You know, as we go about forming a new board, we're going to be doing some board workshop team sort of thing. So first thing is, is we're going to need to nail down some dates when we can all be together, because it's important, first of all, be together for that. But I think it's important as we go forward to also talk about things as to how we operate as a team, if there are areas that we can improve even now. And to that end, and people who serve with me for well know that I'm really big on this Lincoln on leadership thing, where if something untrue is said about someone or something, we need to just bring it out and make sure that it's set right. And so I really felt the need, and as a result of the election and such, that there were a few things that were out there that are not, in my opinion, accurate, and some factual things that I wanted to set right and straight on. And I think it's even more important when some of those things involve board members in terms of what board members are communicating to the public. And so I just wanted to reference that there was an email, it was Kim and Bianca, I think, that came up from you that happened in my way, because as those things do, when you set things up in your case, people set it, set it, set it, and sometimes they get places where you may not think that they're going to end up. But as we mentioned earlier, you were obviously on a different side of the referendum than the rest of us were. So your email, you know, everybody in the wider world to advocate for your point of view, but there were a couple of things in that email that were factually incorrect. And I just wanted to check that with you and see where your understanding was on it. And just for the sake of giving that out there. I believe in that email, you referenced yourself as the Chair of the Finance Committee. You ever appointed the Chair of the, I missed that election.
No, that was purely Eric, that was assured that I was a member of the Finance Committee, so I apologize for that, that was incorrect, yes. I, Mr. Commissioner, I checked about that, now you can come up with that, yes.
That, you know, I have to say that was very troublesome to me to see that kind of misrepresentation. And Mr. Johnson, you served on that committee one year, I am currently serving that with you now. If there were to be a take that to a Chair, I'm guessing what would be me. But I just, you know, thought that that was important to say that when we are communicating with each other, we obviously expect to have accuracy in our words. But more importantly, if there are communications going out about us to others, I think the accuracy is important there. The, the second part of that, and this is maybe a little less factual, but I still think factual. You referenced in that email that the cost of the project was obviously going to be seventeen point six, and you said, of course, you referenced interest, which I think comes to twenty-three, twenty-three point four. And in your email, you said it's a twenty-seven million dollar project, and that those interest fees were conveniently omitted from district information. And I feel it necessary to say that on our website, those fees are stated explicitly on there. They were stated in the presentation by letter, I believe. And whenever Dr. Ayers did a form that I saw, if somebody asked about it, I mean, there was no, I, I think most people understand that if you're going out and bonding, there's going to be interest fees involved, correct?
Then I can't tell you, but that it was important for me to make sure that that element was included in the principal as well as the interest, because that's a total impact to the district. So I don't know, of those folks in the public who understand how that bond issue would plus the interest payments, and the impact to the district, that it could totally on that surface. That was only one clarification.
And, and again, I don't, I don't wiggle with trying to make sure people are aware of that, but I think you said the word "communally" implies that there was some attempt at deception. And I guess I would ask you, do you feel that Dr. Ayers or any of us has attempted to deceive on that point?
No, I would never suggest that. What I felt that was that the terms, the overall project typically wasn't referenced with the interest payments involved on a typical basis. And that's all I want to make sure, is that those folks who supported me, and those folks who expected me to be fiscally responsible and transparent, that was my goal, to make sure that that element was included. Now, there was no, "conveniently" may have been the wrong word, I apologize for that. But that's the point I was making, was making sure, to ensure about me personally being fully transparent and explaining my position at the no vote level.
And, and again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to beat the dog that was open, but I agree completely with the idea of saying I want to make sure everybody can hold their own down. I think there are ways to do that, to just say... I think there are ways to do that, to just say, here's some information that I use to mind thinking, and that I would like to use mirrors thinking, without implying that information that other board members or staff are providing is somehow being obfuscated intentionally. I think it's very easy to state things fashion, and I do believe we have made it a practice in this board, and in fact, we haven't, please, please tell me, because I consider that one of my servant duties to try to make sure that we are all respectful and truthful and honest with each other, you know, so when something like that comes our way, comes my way, I'm sure, may have come to other people as well, it's not only the fact that it's maybe a disagreement of opinion, but I believe it starts to erode at some of the feeling of respect that we really have for each other. And, and you know what, really, if you had a team where everybody thought the same way, you wouldn't need a team, you know, and so we, I think, value having opinions, and we love every voice to speak up, and, you know, I told you personally, I would like to hear your voice more at the board table, because we do bring that, you know, perspective. But just my feelings and, you know, I'll leave it at that, but it was annoying that being, I felt like I needed to bring it out.
I do know, I'm not offended by that, that before, can you add a comment?
Thank you. Time is for future discussion, we have a technology update, social emotional learning standards, I think that would be at our next committee, the whole is getting correct to us. Announcements, we have check with the board on April sixteenth, that we can warn you south from four to five thirty, so that should be fun. Committee of the whole, April twenty-fourth, which is what I just talked about. We do have May seventh now, is going to be the meeting at which we seek to reboard. Yes, one friend, board members outside town, he needs to make it on May seventh, May seventh. It wasn't May sixth, no, it's May seventh. No, first reading of the board meeting is one day too late. Yes, may, we had, just for the sake of the public, we have a statutory window in which we need to see board members, May seventh is the last date that we can do that, and it is the last date that all of the board members can make it, so May seventh it is. And the question before the House is, timelines, it shouldn't be a very long meeting, what are you thinking in time, in terms of start time? I mean, normally we do seven thirty, but we're thinking maybe six, six thirty, what do you want to do? Just sort of, what?
One, five, you want?
Well, I think, let me, let me be more direct, Dr. Harris has requested that we can maybe make it a little earlier, because it's just better for him to be able to get the meeting done and then, you know, go on to this evening, so.
I just suggested, we don't have to wait till seven thirty, it is a short meeting as well, although, and we see board members reorganizing and reaffirming our services, that's the agenda. And if we, even if it's a half hour, you know, seven o'clock, six thirty, whatever it is, if it's seven thirty, it is what it is, it's a different meeting. I did talk to the, to the board members that will be taking their seats today, and they're flexible as well, so, up for the time. I know some of the, the day that they're over.
All right, can I suggest to it, look before the dinner hour, instead of during the dinner? Because I, I mean, five thirty is fine, but six, six thirty is just not doable for me. I mean, I would prefer to do it like, you know, within an hour, when you have to leave to go home, you know, if you leave at four thirty, five thirty, I just think seven thirty, yeah, three is probably late for you, but I want to be six, six, I don't know, that's my husband has a reunion, I like to add that.
Is five thirty doable for people? Five thirty, five thirty, five thirty, grand, five thirty, good, okay? We've only got one, one more board member, but five thirty, we're planning, okay? If there's a change in that, you'll get that to us. All right, and then the last thing is that that's regular meeting is May eighth at Baxton Elementary School. Now you move to public comments on non-agenda items. And we have Mr. Mark Stern, the reference of Mr. Stern, I think you remember our protocol here, which is twenty minutes, it won't be yet in on here, item at all.
Thank you. I sensed tonight a little bit of denial about part of the report. I saw, reading about the referendum results yesterday, one president's former vice president.
Excuse me, Mr. Stern, normally when you approach the board, you need to give your name and address, would you like to refer to that?
Sure. My name is Mark Stern, I'm at thirty-five twenty-five South Gasport in Oakbrook, Illinois.
Oakbrook?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm still on the hooker, did pay for my taxes for twenty-twelve, and I did a little repeat years ago. I sensed a denial, I think, we talked about respect, maybe a lot of respect that voters voted yesterday, right, and saying we're legally going to be referendo. Now, I think your educators made yourselves a little short. I'm hearing voters didn't understand what this was about. Well, I think voters understood perfectly well, there was information, I asked it all over the district, there was a lot of understanding, I think they got it. Now, you talk about people are denigrated for voting, or voting with a pocketbook, well, isn't this board voting with its pocketbook, and it elects not to use the school construction grant for that purpose? Talk about character counts in District Two Hundred, if you represent the state and want money for school construction, isn't it applicable to use it for that? Now, there's a lot on your plate. Isn't it true that for your audited financial statements, over the next decade, you've got seventy-eight point three million increased debt service coming out of the books, and stuff that's already been incurred without any reference? That's like three Joffre's of tax increases over and above what was currently being paid by the taxpayers, and conveniently, if you will, I did not see an estimate of total cost of debt service, only the incremental cost of Jefferson. Now, isn't it also true that standard and quarters, we affirmed your bond rating on the code of strong reserves and working cash fund, without adding this money into the working cash fund? Now, isn't it also true that your own PMA projections indicate that in just three years, if you adhere to your budget targets and balanced budgets, you'll increase your reserves by twelve million dollars, which is the same amount of money if you pause it in there? So if Jefferson is really the highest leading priority, wouldn't it make sense to use the money for that? You're saying, no, our fund balance policy, which is self-proved, is more important than doing a Jefferson work. Now, I find this a lot, because isn't it true that tonight, you just took money out of your fund balances for Astrotherm? Isn't that what I see in the report as far as the source of money for the Astrotherm? So we can't take money out of the fund balances, which you elected to put in there in the first place, for Jefferson, so you want the taxpayers to pay for it, but you can't take it out to pay for Astrotherm. So I think that if the board is well-served, they will immediately study how they can use a school construction grant for that purpose, if Jefferson is really the highest priority. I think that's why a lot of people voted against it, a lot of people think some of these are dumb, and you want to be gone. So I'd like to present this check as a reminder.
Thank you, Mr. Stern.
I got enough people, I've got air cycle.
All right, now, do you have any more to say there, the, the boss?
Mr. Stern, we're telling you, the board will be hired for this, so I don't know who is supporting this. This is probably correct, and that usually, not having fund banks, that's what I'm saying, so, if it is this, is that a comparative, in the way, if you can still, one, makes it so we have to listen to everyone, I may be dead.
All right, we will now be adjourned to full session. The items that we will be attending to are personnel items, handling litigation, and the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district. Is there a motion to adjourn to full session for both sides? By bar? Second, and there will be no action taken, correct? No action will be taken, all right. Would you call the vote?
Mrs. Gant?
Yes.
Mrs. Gant?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackel?
Yes.
Mr. Gant?
Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned to full session.